I'd like to welcome you to our first meeting in April. The snow that I woke up to this morning didn't immediately signal April to me, but I guess that's April in South Dakota sometimes for you. I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones. Meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Karski. Carol Muller is here if you need listening device. And that takes us to routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And next I'd entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 26, 2019, for the Minnehaha County Commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Then I'd entertain a motion to approve the joint Dell Rapids and Minnehaha County meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to pay the bills in the amount of $511,969.82.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is reports, and there are none. Personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever, Human Resources. I have a few items for you this morning. The first is to recognize the following significant employee anniversaries for April. We have Gerald Ebert, a technical analyst in IT, Doug Flora, a certified civil process server in the Sheriff's Office, and Jamie Gravitt in the JDC, all celebrating five years of service. We have Jason Burns, Deputy Sheriff for the Sheriff's Office, and Zach Zagalsky for, as a sergeant for the Sheriff's Office, both celebrating 10 years. And then we have Eric Smith, a CO in the jail, Ralph Hammer, the Whedon Pass Supervisor at the Highway, Josh Anold is a Systems Administrator in IT, and Don Lotwine is a Program Analyst too in IT, all celebrating 15 years of service. And I think we have at least one or two here. Anyone want to say anything?
Ralph's over there.
Yeah, we have a couple of you here. Nobody rushing to the podium.
Not only has Ralph had 15 years with us, he's also announced his retirement. And so I told him that this is probably going to be his last commission meeting unless he runs to be a county commissioner here in the future.
Which we would welcome him to do that, so, well, congratulations.
The next item I have for us this morning is to record volunteers for the County Department for March 2019. We're down slightly from our near 300, and we're still though at 275, so a lot of volunteers across the county.
And we are very appreciative of every one of them.
The next item I have is a request for, I think the formal motion that I need is to authorize the Chair to sign the Amendment to Administrative Services Agreement between Minnehaha County and UMR for 2019. This is probably a familiar item for you. You see it every year sometime between November and March. Each year, our third-party administrator for the health plan requires that we update our administrative services agreement with an amendment. The amendment usually just sets out the rates that we agreed to at the beginning of the contract, and that's what you're seeing in front of you today. So the rates that you're seeing for all those medical services for 2018 and 19 are the ones that we expected, so I'm asking for your approval.
Any questions for Carrie?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Carrie. Next item are abatements, and there are none. Item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices. First one is a first reading to authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing of rezoning number 1901. Good morning.
Good morning, David Heinold, County Planning Department. Rezoning request 19-01 is a rezoning request to rezone from the I-1 Light Industrial District to the R-1 Residential District. This property is located within the unincorporated area of Rowena, that is called Rowena, it's about one and a half acres there. This item has been to the Planning Commission, and now requires a public hearing before the County Commission and final action. So staff recommends a date for the hearing, be April 23, 2019. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning. It included some of the petitioner submitted documents, as well as the map and additional information for your review. The minutes were also included as well from the prior meeting. So action should be taken to authorize the auditor to publish a notice of a public hearing on an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County, which will be held on April 23, 2019, at or after 9:00 AM at a meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. So I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Commissioner Karski.
Just curious, David, you know, I look at the location of this right on 42, kind of a busy thoroughfare, I guess, out in Iowa, and going from industrial to residential seems backwards of the way that it would be. You know, how do we, I know there's a home out there, it's probably grandfathered in. What are the plans for, does this person have specific plans for that property? Do we have a long-range plan for a corridor like this? I mean, can you talk to me a little bit about?
So, okay, yes, so the applicant does have a plan for the property. They would like to restore the individual home that's already on the property. So there's two different parcels, there's a vacant lot, and then there's the property that the house sits on, and they're split into two. So a little bit of history about what the, the planning in the area. This area does have an overlay district with such additional zoning regulations on top of the ordinance, so it's called the Red Rock Corridor Zoning District Overlay. So that in itself is about a half-mile distance on each side of the Highway 42, so north and south areas in there, from like Sioux Falls to Iowa, the Iowa State Line. So that does have its own future land use map. This property is not located with, it's projected to be more of an industrial area because there's properties to the north that are industrial, but the property to the east is residential property. It's being used as a daycare. And then to the south, you've got residential properties on the other side of the highway. And then as you move to the west, across Douglas Avenue, you've got pretty much mainly commercial areas. The area just to the west of that is the store there. And then you've got some vacant land and some storage units to the west with that white building. And then the remaining property is a mix of commercial and residential to the southwest of the subject property that you see in red on the map.
So that Red Rock Corridor District for, I don't know if it's an organized thing, but the planning district, who sits on that? Is that a board? Who kind of manages that process? Because I mean, you're telling me we have commercial, we have industrial, we have residential, we have more residential, who puts all this together?
So, yeah, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that the Red Rock Corridor had a task force that was made up of business owners, landowners, county commissioners, planning commissioners. And so they set the, in residence as well, they set the, like, the future land use for that whole corridor to help kind of guide the planning and zoning decisions that are made, especially at this body and with the Planning Commission as well.
We do have a long-range plan. We're not haphazardly plugging, changing industrial to residential or that type of thing.
Correct. We have a plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice of a hearing on rezoning.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So the next item is also a planning and zoning notice. It's a first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing and rezoning 19-04. Good morning, Scott.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, Planning Director. This is a rezoning request that has also gone before the Planning Commission at our March 25 meeting. The applicant is requesting to rezone a small portion of land, less than a third of an acre, from A-1 Agriculture to C Commercial. There is, you can see, if you look at the map, there's a building to the west. That property is already zoned C Commercial, and the, the property owner is basically just enlarging that lot to make it more viable commercially for activity that goes on there. This property is about, well, it's located between Dell Rapids and Sioux Falls on Highway 115, and there's some, it used to be the site of an auction facility, now it's vacant. The applicant is marketing it for new ownership. To the north of that, there's a, to the property to the north is also a greenhouse nursery where there's, you know, commercial sales of material. So I have included the map, the minutes, the hearing notice. So today I'm asking that you would authorize the auditor to also publish a hearing notice for this rezoning request for the same time and date as the previous one, April 23, 2019, at 9:00 AM here in this room before the County Commission. And this did go to the Planning Commission. It was recommended to be approved unanimously. So I would be glad to answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, I'd ask that you set the hearing date for that, for the April 23.
Move to set the date of hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any questions for Scott? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item is petition for compromise of lien, and there are none. This is our opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak about something that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, takes us to regular business. Flood update. Unfortunately, flood update has apparently been regular business now for several weeks, so, good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners Mike Mills and me, County Sheriff. Thought I'd provide a little bit of an update. I just returned from Renner where the water's still over the road and the road's closed. We have some, still have some road closures west of Baltic, road closures in Dell Rapids, but the water's receding, and that's good news. And the cool weather that we've had has helped reduce that flow somewhat, so fortunately, most of, you know, a lot of the properties that were flooded this year have been flooded before. And so some of them are pretty good at knowing where their sandbags need to be placed, how to place them, how to route the water, and Renner being a good example of that. I will say that we've, there are some lessons learned, I think, and when I think of lesson learned, I think of the positive side of lessons learned, things that I thought went really well and that we can learn from. One of them was the value of the Emergency Operations Center. It was spun up early enough with the city of Sioux Falls, the county and the state present. It was nice to see Commissioners stop on occasion to see how, how it was going and to interact with city and state leaders. Governor's Office had representatives there, the city emergency management, police, fire, sheriff, our county emergency management. The Commission Office with Craig Dewey was important to have that, Craig there to help us message and also help provide updates to the Commission. It was a little bit of baptism by fire for our new emergency manager, Jason Gierman, part-time, but we kept him really busy and he did a great job. And so one of the other things that we really found to be valuable, one of them was the public access to a website that they could see what roads were closed, not only in the city of Sioux Falls, but also out in the county. So deputies could update through Metro. Metro took it upon themselves to be the conduit for that and do the updates on the, on the website. So Metro did it initially with one of their individuals just assigned to do that, and then supervisors took that under their wings and they did it themselves on each shift. So that, that public map was updated regularly by Metro, both in the city and out in the county. We found it valuable to put frequently asked questions out, not only through social media, but also on our county website. All those questions about, if I need sandbags, where do I get sandbags? What do I, are they full? Do I need to have somebody fill them? How do I get them here? How many do I need? How do I clean up my property? What's a safe disinfectant to use? You know, there's just a ton of them, and they're still frequently asked questions. There'll be new ones now as the waters recede and, and people move into more of a recovery or mitigation mode. I think one of the important things we're learning is to get the word out to citizens to get assessments of their damage, so that the Commission will have the information that they need should they need to, when they want to update the state and the federal government on damage within the county and the city. We really learned the value of the 211 helpline, incredible resource in our community, and they were really utilized to really value not only the citizens and volunteers, but to coordinate those activities. So if you needed volunteers to help you, you'd call 211. If you wanted to volunteer, you called 211. And so it really worked well, and I am so impressed, and 211 was a critical part of our Emergency Operations Center. So again, that was, that was very valuable. So, so, and I think the significant use of social media was important. We get some pictures out there. The Civil Air Patrol did some flyovers, provided us with some pictures that we could get to the public so they had a better understanding. A lot of messaging through the Public Information Office at the EOC so that we were sending similar messages out. The efforts by the Governor's Office and closing, closing the rivers to the navigation, you know, we expect they'll probably open before too long, so that the kayakers that want to go in rapid water may be able to, but right now it's just too, it's too difficult, especially in the city. And so we're still, the waterways are still closed right now. And then for those of you who have, as we recommended, when I came into the emergency management business, the National Incident Management System, the use of the NIMs system for this response was part of what happened in the EOC, and to see that you have separate sections handling the emergency very efficiently of operations, planning, logistics, finance, all those key elements for this and to work with the public. So we'll certainly, you know, do some after-action reporting and try to say what, what really worked, what didn't work, how can we do better? But this was really, you know, I, I was very fortunate to be able to see how our city, county and state interacted successfully in this. And if, if any citizen would have had an eye into that Operations Center and then what's going on out on the street with our fire department, our street departments, our highway departments, our interaction with county highway with DJ Boothie and his staff, our interaction with the townships, who still have a multitude of roads that are closed, I think the public would be very satisfied with what the services that they've gotten. So with that, I'm gonna, if you have, if you have any questions of me, that's fine. If not, I'll have Jason come up, our Emergency Management Director.
Thank you very much.
Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. I don't have a lot to add after that. He kind of explained everything. The one thing I will add is with the planning and zoning, you didn't hear a lot about them, but they were crucial in getting us maps and the GIS system, and they also worked really closely with the city GIS to keep updating that mapping, that, that interactive map. So they were a good asset for us too. So we did have some meetings while we were in the middle of this on how to enhance that through the, through the programs they already have, and that was, that was nice to see also. So we're kind of moving into the recovery phase and the damage assessment. We met with the townships last night. They had some good questions on what the next process was, and about all I can say is the, the county highway's aware of what to do, the townships I think now are aware of what to do, and that's take a lot of pictures and document the damage and get us the information so we can hopefully declare the disaster with a good estimate when the city's ready and the county's ready. Other than that, I really don't have much to add, and if there's questions for me on what the next process is, I'll be happy to answer them if I can.
For private homeowners that have damage, you want them to get you information as well?
Go through the, I've received two private home damage assessments, and that came through the 211 helpline. One was out of Brandon and one was in the city of Sioux Falls. I have not received any from the county. But for private homeowners, we'll get the word out that says, "Call 211." They'll do it over the phone, and then they get it to me, and then I coordinate with the city as far as how we're gonna proceed from there.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Karski.
Two questions. So I had breakfast this morning with a couple gentlemen, and they each had water damage in their basement close to the river, et cetera. You know, carpeting, some personal property, that type of thing. Is that what you want to hear about?
I think it's very rare for, from what I'm learning, it's very rare for homeowners to get federal assistance from a flood. There's so many specifics that have to be met, but it does not hurt to at least record that damage. If they call into that 211 helpline, they've really stepped up and said, "Hey, we'll take care of this for you," so we're not, you know, I'm not going out to a house to assess it, but, and they need to take pictures, document, keep receipts, just in case in the end, for some reason, we happen to have federal money that can be turned back over to, to homeowners.
So is it for that, or is it just for kind of record-keeping for your, you know, for some database, you know, this much damage occurred? Hey, just for them to call in and say, "I'm taking care of this, but I had $10,000 in damage." Is that what you want?
It's pretty basic on what the questions are, but again, like I told the township, they should take photos too of damage and, and, you know, as the repairs go, and that's gonna be good for their insurance also, to document it that way, so.
If they're covered?
If they're covered. Yeah. There's a lot of, a lot of clauses in there, I'm finding out, that, that aren't covered, so.
Oh, yeah. Insurance companies spend a lot of time talking about water. Might be a little soon for it, but if you step back, you know, one thing that you learned going forward from this experience that you could share, or is it just too soon?
The good thing I learned, I mean, there were some mistakes made along the way, but there were, you know, nothing, nothing great, because we all make mistakes, but what we do is, we debrief that afterwards. We'll sit down with the Sheriff's Office and, and our counterparts and say, "Okay, what could we have done better?" But one of the, one of the things that surprised me was the level of community involvement that there was, not just in Sioux Falls, but out in the county. I was just, did a prerecorded thing with Bill Zortman this morning, and he kind of asked me the same question, and it was the person in Renner that just moved to Renner and hasn't experienced the flood yet, didn't know what to do. The other residents stepped up, helped him and told him, "This is what you need to do." And that, that to me is, is that small-town atmosphere and what I grew up in when I was young, and that's how it should work. Brandon did the same thing. I didn't hear a lot from Brandon. They took care of things themselves. I got him some resources that they needed, but overall, it was, it was good to see that that communication was there, and that EOC, again, was important in the initial phases, and that's something that was valuable.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barth.
Jason, I appreciate your being there last night with the towns and townships, but I think, just want to reiterate the issue on trying to get the financial stuff in so that we can qualify. There are some benchmarks that need to be achieved in order to qualify for aid, you know, for our county and our townships to qualify. They have to come in with a certain number of cost of damage.
It's so much per person based on the population. I think it's $330 per person, so from my understanding, if you were in a really rural community with not a lot of population, you wouldn't need a lot of damage to qualify. We're gonna need a considerable amount of damage. However, I think with what the damage is in Sioux Falls from just the bridge that they had go out is, is probably gonna be close to qualifying for the whole county. So I don't think there's gonna be a lot of issues from what, what I've been told on that one. Okay.
But bottom line, by reporting it and recording it, you might be helping your neighbor as well.
Yes, definitely, definitely.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. We certainly have appreciated all the hard work that you and your team have done. I did have an opportunity to go to the EOC. It is, it is impressive to see all those people working together and how that whole NIMs project where we, as Commissioners, have been working towards taking a few classes on that, and it, went to see it in action and see how that whole structure is set up and people have specific jobs and go to work. It's, it's really very reassuring as a citizen to know that we are in good hands, so.
I don't think the classes really do it justice once you're sitting there doing all that.
Like most things, you learn a lot more when you're thrown in the deep end, so, yeah. But we appreciate your work.
On behalf of the Sheriff's Office and Emergency Management, we appreciate you guys' support, so it was good, good that you guys were there for us, so.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
So DJ, speaking of recovery, we've got some roads that have taken a beating.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. We certainly do have some roads that have taken a beating. What's different with this event is normally when we see a flooding event, you have a 24 to 48-hour peak time where the water comes up, we deal with it for a day or two, and then the water recedes, and we pull our barricades and the event's over. With this one, we had high waters for over a week, and we still have a few roads that are still underwater, but more importantly, we have a lot of subgrade issues where the water saturated the subgrade soils. And so we've got seven continued road closures right now. Our plan is to evaluate each one of those seven closures on a weekly basis using a geotechnical, a local geotechnical firm. They're gonna do some soil samples and test the moisture content on those. So on a weekly basis, we're gonna evaluate those to find out when is the right time to open those roads back up. So we expect that we're gonna have some continued road closures for an indefinite amount of time. Along with that, we have 25 bridges that were impacted with the, with the flooding, with either high water or scour happening at the bridge sites or with ice hitting the bridges. And so we're gonna do about 25 bridge inspections here in the next week or two. We're hoping that the water goes down for us to be able to inspect the, the substructure of the structures. If not, then, then that week or two might extend out even a little bit farther, but the state has stepped up and we are gonna qualify for some additional funding specific for those post-event bridge inspections. There's a picture that was pulled up here. This is a signed trailer. This actually isn't our signed trailer, but it was an example of one that I was able to pull up today or last night. So a few years ago, we bought, or we built two trailers real similar to this where it looks pretty simple. You just put a bunch of barricades on a trailer. Prior to having something like this, the, the standard practice was to put a bunch of barricades in the back of pickups, and that wasn't very effective or efficient. And so we built two of these. This last event was really the first time we got to put, to test these trailers. They worked awesome. We were able to send two guys out with about 20, 20 barricades or so and do a lot of work without having to come back and, and make multiple trips. The problem that we found was we only had two of them. And so we had two efficiently running crews putting out barricades at times. We had a lot of extra manpower without the ability to efficiently put out barricades. And so we're gonna build a couple more of these here this spring or early summer when we get time or rainy days or something like that in the shop. I know it was talked about twice already. It's certainly worth reiterating the interactive map that was used with all the different agencies throughout this whole entire process. Was an awesome resource for the public and also for us and for other government agencies, being able to see where the road closures were at, being able to direct the public to that map and, and allow them to kind of answer their own questions and have a resource to go to in the future. We push that out on social media on a pretty regular basis, and I think I'd love to see the amount of hits that were out on that website because it was a great resource for us. The drone that we bought a couple months ago was put to great use during this whole process, us being able to do inspections and then also to create some video content to put out on social media. Has received a lot of positive feedback from other government agencies and also the public. And what I found was, when you're out on these sites where we have flooding, there's a lot of people that are, are just coming up to the waters and, and looking, or driving around barricades and looking, a lot of looky-loos, not necessarily people that live right there or even in town. Some people were coming from Minnesota just to look at the high water. And when they're able to do that from home on their, their Facebook page or something like that, hopefully it reduces, reduces the risk that we have with people out driving around in, in the flooded areas. So with that, I'll stand by if any questions. That's all I have. We'll be evaluating roads and bridges in the next weeks upcoming, and, and the amount of damage that we have, I think, is pretty minimal, but we'll be finding that out for sure here in the near future.
Commissioner Barth.
DJ, last night, the towns and townships folks were talking about having their road closed signs being stolen and stuff. Wouldn't you agree that just like stealing a Wouldn't you agree that, just like stealing a stop sign, you're putting people at risk by taking down a sign that protects the public? You know, you drive, sent some kid past a closure location, and they think they can make it, and, you know, there's a bridge out.
Absolutely. I, I don't know what somebody would be thinking to go out to steal a barricade or a sign to put somebody in, in harm's way like that. I can't explain it.
And I guess, I, I would also ask, you know, there was some discussion about who to call when you have a closed road. And didn't we agree that it was either two-one-one or nine-one-one? Because emergency management, your office, are not always available to answer 24 hours a day.
Right. The best, the best number to call is nine-one-one when there's a road out or a road closed or something like that where it's not signed. They also do have a non-emergency number, the three-six-seven-seven-thousand number.
Commissioner Karski offered my phone number, which also works.
We've already posted it on the website, cellphone number.
Other questions for DJ? Just along the same lines, I'd just like to reiterate to the public that if there are signs up still that say that road is closed, even if you don't see standing water, that's there for a reason. And unless you like paying higher taxes, you should try to stay off that road and keep it from doing further damage to the road, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes us to item 11, to consider a proclamation to declare April 7th through 13th Mini-Haha County Volunteer Work Week. Carrie?
Good morning. Earlier in the meeting, we talked about the number of volunteers that we have at the county, and each month, we recognize them. Over the course of the year, that adds up to literally thousands of hours of service that volunteers are providing to the county, and we couldn't do many of the things that we do without them. Each year, we recognize or ask for the commission to formally recognize Volunteer Week as one way to first encourage volunteering in our community, but also to recognize the many, many hours of service those volunteers have given to us. So, this morning, I'm asking for the formal approval for a motion to issue their proclamation recognizing April 7th through the 13th this year as Volunteer Week in Mini-Haha County.
You wanna read the proclamation?
It would be my pleasure. Whereas National Volunteer Week is April 7th through the 13th, 2019. And whereas the National Volunteer Week is about inspiring, recognizing, and encouraging people to seek out imaginative ways to engage in their communities. And whereas volunteers make a significant contribution to Mini-Haha County, in 2018, each month, an average of approximately 277 volunteers contributed to several areas throughout the county, giving thousands of hours of service, enriching the lives of those that they have helped, and saving the taxpayers of Mini-Haha County tens of thousands of dollars. And whereas the Mini-Haha County Commission wishes to thank all of the individuals who have given their time to support the county government and make our community a better place to live, now therefore, the Mini-Haha County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 7th through the 13th, 2019 as Mini-Haha County Volunteer Week.
Wonderful. I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve the proclamation for Mini-Haha County Volunteer Week?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, and thank you to all our volunteers. It really is a, it makes a difference every day, so thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 12, and we have a presentation from Planning and Zoning in Parks. Good morning, Scott.
Aye. Scott Anderson, planning director again. So, thank you for having me give you a brief presentation on what we do in planning and zoning, and a little bit of informing the public also that may not be aware of all the things that we're involved with. So, with that, I will get started with what, some, some of the things we've already completed. And that would be, that would be things like, we work with code enforcement, we work with zoning enforcement, CUP inspections. Last year, we hired a seasonal temporary, a seasonal building inspector, or sorry, code enforcement inspector. And he worked basically 20 hours a week and helped us with code enforcement. He also was able to go out and look at conditional use permits that we've approved in the past to make sure that they are meeting all the conditions that were placed on the conditional use permit by the Planning Commission and County Commission. Our office also does building inspections and septic inspections on new constructions and remodeling. We also work with GIS, or my office works with GIS. And as you heard through emergency management, this year, we were actively, we were very active in creating up-to-date or live interactive maps showing the road closures and flooding of the events. And we have been working with townships to create programs on our GIS that may assist them in tracking damage. And we are glad to work with other townships. If they come to us, we can help create any kind of information that may be useful or program to track that kind of information or other information, culverts. We can host that information for them. So, some of the other things that we've done, for example, that we're currently doing, we, we do the code enforcement, building inspections, as I indicated, site visits. We have been working actively on sign ordinance revisions. We, our sign ordinance that is hosted or held in, or found in the zoning ordinance is in need of some updates based on recent past decisions, court decisions. We realize that our sign ordinance needs to be updated to reflect recent decisions by the Supreme Court and other courts to how signs are looked at and dealt with. Also want to report that as of January 1st, we have a Facebook page. And we are sort of learning and trying to decide what kind of information to put on that Facebook page. So, it's still evolving, but as you heard from, from DJ, it, it can be a useful tool, and we're just navigating the waters and trying to figure out how we are going to make that as useful as possible. So, that is something that we continue to work on. So, I also included some general information on the number of, like, code enforcement complaints and items that we receive throughout the year. Last year, for example, we received 41 zoning nuisance complaints. We received 20 zoning complaints. We had seven CUP reviews that we were required to do, or that were in addition to the other ones. That was a total of 65 items in 2018. We also then had 40 items that we had been continuing to work on from past years. We were able to close 55 cases, nuisance and zoning and other cases throughout the year. We, we did bring one item to the county commission to have it abated, as declared a public nuisance and abated. And so, that was done. And that leaves us with 46 open items that we continue to work on. As you know, zoning enforcement can be a long, drawn-out process, because we, we work with the property owners to try to get them into compliance. When that fails, we work with the state's attorney's office and turn those over. And the state's attorney's office continues to work with that property owner to try to get them into compliance. And when all that, when that fails, then we either go through two avenues of declaring it either a public nuisance through the county commission, or the state's attorney can also then take them to court, and we declare it a nuisance that way and have it abated if it's a zoning issue and not a public nuisance issue. To give you some ideas of other issues that we, other applications and whatnot that we work on, in 2018, we had approximately 50 conditional use permit applications that we dealt with, four rezoning requests, four variances, tax amendments, temporary uses, road vacations, preliminary plans. In addition, we, of course, are always there to answer questions on agricultural tourism and any kind of special events. We have a very good track record of how we approve things. We only had one variance request denied. We had, in 2000, we, in 19 so far, we've had just one conditional use permit appealed. And then, finally, what we continue to work on, we are still working on our MS4 program, which is wastewater, or sorry, point source discharge into waterways. So, it's like stormwater management. This has been a long process, and we continue to work with this. EPA is not certain how they are going to be managing this on a state level. So, until we actually get the direction from the state level, and that position at the state level is vacant in D E N R, we cannot really move forward with our MS4 program. We are obligated to do that. We are just waiting from this, for the state on direction and guidance. So, once they fill that position at the state, we will continue to move forward with our MS4 program implementation. Just to let you know that in 2020, and this will be something that'll be coming before you in the budget session or the budget hearings, we fly over our aerial photography every three years. And in 2020 is the next flyover date. So, our GIS department, Heidi, has been acquiring or compiling the information on what that's going to cost. We've been working with the vendor on our different options that we have, that we have. And so, that will be something that we'll be discussing at our budget hearings. Next year is 2020 census, and my office is also obligated, or is the person that the Census Bureau works with, we update their census, we make sure that their census maps are updated, because we want to make sure everyone's counted and that we have an accurate number of housing. We, we make sure that the housing numbers are updated for the census, so they can have the address points to go out and collect that information. We are actively moving our building permit information and zoning information to a digital platform that our building inspector is able to go out into the field and use a tablet to pull up information in real time. So, that has been very, that's been very beneficial. And then, finally, we continue to work with all the municipalities in, in the county. In, in addition to all the 24, 23 townships, we work closely with all of those entities. And, and I have, I've been working closely with the city of Hartford, and I know that in the next year, we will be looking at a lot of work and time that will be spent with the city of Hartford as they move forward on their request for joint zoning control. So, that is gonna be something that we will be monitoring. And I believe, lastly, I am here to answer any questions that you may have. So, briefly, that's what the planning department has been involved with, and some of the items that we work with closely on a daily basis. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Scott? Commissioner Barth?
Scott, this is a busy time of year for your office, right, with people coming in for building permits, et cetera?
Yes.
And I guess one thing I'd comment is, on the compliance inspections and stuff, I think it makes it actually a little easier for people to get something approved if they know that there's some kind of enforcement going on. If, if you thought your neighbor, once approved, would go hog wild or whatever, it wouldn't be a very popular thing. And it is a nuisance to enforce these things, but I think our county does their best. And it's, it's too bad that we have so, so many people who are reluctant to clean up their properties and, and work with our, our staff. But I think our staff does their best, and certainly, I don't like it when we have to have them come before us either, that is, on those issues.
Well, if you, if you look at the big picture, literally, there are tens of thousands of parcels of property in the county. And I think, relatively speaking, there are very few code enforcement actions that we have to take. So, I, I think that all in all, we're very lucky that we do have citizens that want to make sure that their properties are kept up to, to a certain standard, that they're not violating the zoning ordinance. So, in some ways, I think we're quite lucky. But you are correct, Commissioner Barth, when we do have to do zoning enforcement or code enforcement, it is a long, drawn-out process, and it, it really ties up a lot of, of county time and asset, not only for us, but the state's attorney and other people that get involved with that as well, sheriff's deputies, the courts, your time, the commission office time. So, when we do have to do code enforcement, it is, it can be a long, drawn-out expend, of time and expense.
Commissioner Karski?
Pretty simple. Be a good neighbor. Be the neighbor that you'd want to have.
Exactly.
Just, yeah, common sense, but. Bringing Moe back, is that right? Moe Forsh?
Yeah, that's who we're looking at. He worked out quite well for us last year, and I think he's expressed interest in helping us again this year. I, I sort of like to start that position a little bit later in April or May, or first part of May, because, well, first of all, the weather conditions in the spring sometimes aren't very good for getting, prompting people to, to do that cleanup, because it's either frozen, or now muddy or wet. So, the best time to, to get people going is summer and into fall, because you're able to do more work in October than you are in April. And I can only have a, I only can have a temporary person for six months, according to the labor laws. So, I'd rather have them push it out into, into October, November.
And on the GIS, the mapping, how mu, we have a lot of overlap, obviously, with the city of Sioux Falls and the towns and so forth. How much coordinating do we do with what we need and what they use and so forth? How much collaboration is there?
Well, we have, we have quarterly GIS meetings where we meet together with the city, well, all the stakeholders. The city, the, our office, we've, we've included like Brandon, and there's many people that we, we pull together. And I wouldn't say necessarily there's a lot of overlapping. There's a lot of collaboration. The city, the, the city of Sioux Falls actually hosts our GIS server. So, we work closely with them, and we will work closely with them with the acquisition in 20, yeah, in 2000, 2020. I guess we're in 2019. So, when we, we work with them and see if there's any way that there's any cost savings. But we try to fly that, all that, that at the same time through the vendor. And we, the smaller, you know, municipalities and townships don't really have access to, they don't do their own GIS, or, sorry, they don't do their own aerial flyover, so they really rely on some of our information. That's why we work closely with Brandon.
Yeah, and maybe overlapping is a poor choice of words, but, you know, when you got a plane flying, you know, zigzag across the county and taking pictures at whatever thousand feet, you know, where one boundary is and the other, I mean, they don't, it just makes sense to coordinate it.
That's correct, and we collaborate closely with them. And I think that's quite evident with the fact that when we had this flooding event two weeks ago, we worked with the city to make sure that all of our maps were seamlessly showing the road closures, not only in the city, but in the county. And I think that's really beneficial to the public, so it was really a great service.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Benega?
Scott, you have 2018 numbers. Do you, how does that compare to the 2017 code enforcement numbers?
Well, unfortunately, it always sort of seems to remain pretty much the same. We try to, you know, knock those out as much as we can. And generally, I think it, like I said, it, it, it's a matter of some come in and some go out, and those numbers unfortunately always stay relatively the same. They're not huge numbers. And so, you know, three or four can make it look like it's a 10 or 20 percent decrease or increase, but they're relatively the same.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, Scott. So, that takes us to item 13, which is to authorize the highway department to purchase various supplies, parts, and equipment through a variety of state, national, and local procurement contracts. DJ Boothey was here.
Carol Muller took him out.
Carol Muller took him out. Thank you. That'd be great. Otherwise, we might skip to you, Joe.
You know, it's an annual contract where we do all of our purchasing through all these other government entities, and it's just kind of a matter of. other government entities and it's just kind of a matter of annually updating the authorization to do that. I don't think there's any big secrets or surprises here, but on DJ, we can do that. And there he is.
Hi, DJ.
There she is. She's the one responsible.
Good morning again, commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Every year, we have a commission item for purchasing off of other purchasing agency contracts. It's a requirement of our purchasing policy for the commission to approve the purchase of materials or services off of other purchasing agency contracts. And so, on the second page of this agenda item, is a list of nine different contracts that we purchase off of, anything from tires and fuel to steel culverts, light bars on, on vehicles, on new vehicles and vehicles that we just replace light bars, emergency lighting. And so, we request that the commission approve the highway department to purchase various supplies and parts and equipment through these purchasing agency contracts. And what it does is it allows us to go and purchase off of a bid quote or a bid contract. So we don't have to go and get our own quotes or own bids. And it saves us a lot of time and effort in that purchasing process. So I'll stand by for any questions if you have any specific questions.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve, but I do have a question.
Second.
Just a clarification.
So we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth?
DJ, does, does your radio system interact with metro communications or it does?
It does, yes. We use a state radio system. We have different radios, I think, than, than law enforcement or emergency management has. They're not quite as capable, but we certainly can hear and, and correspond with both law enforcement and metro communications.
Any other questions? So we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item 14. It's also yours, DJ.
All right, commissioners, on March 4th, we had our annual materials letting. And we had five bid proposals this year. For the third year in a row, we did not receive any bids on TAC oil, which is an MC 70 oil product that we use. The reason, we have a really great working relationship with the vendor for this, but they know that they're the only vendor that's typically bidding on this. And, and I think that it's kind of unspoken that they don't want to put their number out necessarily. And so, it's a, it's a pretty volatile market. They don't want to have a 12-month contract on, on a, on a little timeframe when this bid comes out. And so, what they prefer to do, and we only spend about $10,000 a year on this, what they prefer to do is that we just get quotes when we need to fill this item. And so they did not submit a bid. And, and so we don't have a bid award or a contract for you for proposal number one. And we will, we'll probably be removing that from, from our annual materials in future years, being as how this is the third year in a row that we haven't received a bid. Proposal number two is for hot mixed asphalt. We received two, two bids for this. This is for the supply of asphalt, not for any installation, but the supply of asphalt. We're at about $53 a ton, I think, this year. That's about 10% higher than we were last year. And I think that we need to have a motion on each one of these proposals.
Madam Chair, I have a question on number two there. Hot mixed asphalt and then concrete pavement, they seem to be disparate items.
When it says hot mixed asphalt, concrete, pavement, that's the formal terminology for hot mixed asphalt.
Thank you. If we need a motion on number two, I'll make it.
Second.
Olivia thinks we can do a motion on all of them.
Okay, great.
I'll make a motion for all of them.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, you might want to have him go through the rest.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
Thanks for the effort, Commissioner Barth.
Yes, thank you.
Proposal number three is for snowplow motor grade blade cutting edges. These are the, the long pieces of metal that we put on the edge of our snowplow blades. That this year will be going to DMC wear parts. Brace of and salt mixture, that's the salt sand that we, that we put down on the roads on occasion. That's pre-mixed and then delivered, or it's not delivered, we have to pick it up. That will be concrete materials for 2019. And then rock, salt and transportation, that is the actual salt that we put down on the, on the roads. That will be Nebraska salt and grain. I will mention that we did have a bid anomaly on that proposal number five for the rock salt. The low bidder did not submit proper documentation. I think it was a bid bond that they did not include in their bid packet. And so, we requested some legal advice and they were determined to be non-responsive in their bidding. And so we will not be awarding it to the apparent low bidder that was red at the, at the bid opening. The cost difference, I think, is, says here, $2.77 per ton, which ends up being a little bit less than $12,000 on the estimated quantity for purchasing in 2019.
Okay. So now we have a motion and a second.
We do.
Any other questions for DJ? If not, it's a roll call vote, please. Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Looks like you have one more, DJ.
All right. This item is for our annual striping contract. The State Department of Transportation is nice enough to coordinate a striping project for counties throughout the state. They group them into large projects with a group of projects in each region. And, and we elect to participate in that. It allows them to administer the contract and then we pay a portion of the, the total cost. And so this year, we're looking at striping 291 miles of our roadway. The total cost would be about, estimated to be about $317,000. And that also includes some edgeline rumbles on certain sections. And then with the 77.5%, 22.5% cost share, that equals out for Minnehaha County to be paying $246,437 estimated. And so, requesting the chairperson to execute the contract with the DOT, authorizing our participation in their striping program.
Questions for DJ? You decide where you put the edgeline rumbles.
So what we look at is a priority based system based off of the amount of daily traffic. And then also, the road has to be qualifying for edgeline rumbles based off of the width. In other words, we don't put them where there's a white line and then no pavement. Has to be a little bit of pavement there, about 12 inches of pavement before, for there to be enough room for the edgelines to not break the pavement off.
Okay.
And every year, we do a little bit more. And so that, that threshold for the number of vehicles goes down every year.
And is that a threshold that you guys determine internally? It's not a national standard or something?
Right.
Okay. All right. Is there any other questions? I'd entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, DJ.
Thank you.
That takes us to item 16. Joe Bosman?
Good morning, commissioners. Joe Bosman, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. I have before you this morning a request based off of a program of grant that was awarded to the state of South Dakota last year in 2018. The Attorney General's Office, in conjunction with the South Dakota Division of Criminal Investigation, applied for a federal award program that is focused on investigating illicit activities related to the manufacture and distribution of methamphetamines. They, it's based off of the COPS program, the COPS grant or the COPS program is something we've applied for in the past. They have different sub-levels of programs under the COPS title. This one has been dubbed the, the COPS Anti-Methamphetamine Program, called the CAMP grant, the C A M P. So out of this, the state of South Dakota was awarded a large amount of funds to be distributed to smaller agencies that are participating in drug task forces. Minnehaha County was identified as being a sub-recipient of that award. And the funding that the state received would be proportionally distributed out to these agencies, providing benefit costs for new unbudgeted sworn officer positions that we then submit for reimbursement through the program to the state. It's a two-year award program. There is no retention requirement at the end of the program. So right now, we have a sub-recipient agreement that has been prepared by the state of South Dakota, requesting the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office to sign the sub-recipient award program, awarding the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office the amount of $134,000, excuse me, $134,128.17. That is going to be for the two-year program. Now, we are started into the program already. The program has started. We have not hired for that position yet, which is okay. It's allowable. Most agencies, due to a restructuring of the funds for this program, everybody got a late start of all the agencies that are going to be receiving funding. We'll just apply, the state will apply for a extension at the end of the two-year program. So at this time, I asked the commission to authorize the sheriff's office to sign the sub-recipient agreement with the state of South Dakota for the COPS CAMP grant, please.
We're going to take this in two separate motions. So we're going to do one to sign the agreement and then the second will address the hiring of the new position.
Make a motion to sign the agreement with the state.
Any questions? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Great.
Excellent. And then the second request that we'd have is now with the sub-recipient agreement has been signed, we'd request authorization for the sheriff's office to hire one deputy sheriff position for the duration of this program.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I think this is great. I mean, this is clearly an area where there's a lot of need in the community and then throughout the county. So we're really appreciative, appreciative of these funds to help aid in that fight.
Yes, thank you. It'll definitely support and, you know, add to our drug task force in aiding the communities in Minnehaha County.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So that takes us to item 17. And I understand Julie Risti has a treat in store for us.
I do. That was the word I was going to use. Julie Risti, Register of Deeds. Good morning. As you probably all know or might remember, April is County Government Month. And the National Association of County Officials has always encouraged counties nationwide to do something to highlight or spotlight their different county departments educationally and informationally. So my presentation today is, is going to be a little bit of a treat. My office thought that they're very excited because you will get to hear from them. And so I'm bringing my office to you today and we're making a presentation to you commissioners and our county for the Register of Deeds office. Thank you. Welcome to the Register of Deeds office. I'm Julie Risti, your Minnehaha County Register of Deeds. I'd like to take you on a short tour and share some of the history and important information about our office. Back in 1859, government land surveyors came to this area of the country, prepared to brave the elements and many other dangers in order to survey the land so that settlement could begin. As they worked to survey the land, they maintained detailed logs, which comprised their field and survey notes, so that the section line boundaries and specific markers placed at the corner of each section could always be found, whether they placed charred stakes, granite stones, iron pins, et cetera. Once the markers were set, establishing official boundary lines, they could never be moved. These important field and survey notes are permanent records held in the Register of Deeds office, along with many other important land records, and are still used today by surveyors, title abstracters, attorneys, and many other land record professionals. On March 2nd, 1861, as one of his last acts as President of the United States, James Buchanan signed the Organic Act, which allowed the people of Dakota Territory to establish a government. Minnehaha County was established in April, but abandoned in August of 1862. It was then reorganized on January 4th, 1868, by the territorial legislature, who appointed John Nelson, John Thompson, and William Melvin as the county commissioners, and Edward Broton as Register of Deeds. Fort Dakota officially opened the area for settlement on November 9th, 1870. There have been many registers of deeds over the years, but one of the most notable was Nye Phillips, a captain in the Civil War, who, following the war, served as the Minnehaha County Register of Deeds for approximately 12 years, from 1872 to 1876, and again from 1884 to 1892. The first known meeting of the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners was held on the second floor of the WS Bloom store on February 13th, 1871. The building was later occupied by Lux Market and was located on the corner of 8th and Main, where the public library is now. The Register of Deeds office has always played an important role in the establishment and settlement of counties since title to property had to be recorded so that ownership could be proven, taxes assessed, and revenues generated. Original land patents, such as this federal land patent issued by President Abraham Lincoln on July 1st, 1864, granted any interest the federal government had in the land to settlers. The section land or farmland could then be plotted into tracts, additions, blocks, and lots for development purposes. The Register of Deeds used an ingenious recording system, which is still used today, whereby documents could be recorded specifically to the legal description of the property they affected, in order to create a clear, indisputable, and ongoing chain of title that could endure. This is a photo of the Register of Deeds office in 1910, when it was located in the Minnehaha County Courthouse, now the Old Courthouse Museum, when W.E. Woodward was the Register of Deeds. And this subsequent photo was taken on April 16th, 1935, at the time when J.R. Scriven, who was a former deputy register of deeds, served then as the Register of Deeds. We have come a long way in 160 years. Although we still actively use even the oldest records, our office now integrates technology in new and important ways to work in conjunction with the records that we still use and maintain perpetually. As the official records office of the county, we must maintain a high level of security concerning our indexing system and the records we maintain. The Register of Deeds not only records important ownership and mortgage documents, but also a wide variety of miscellaneous instruments, such as contracts and agreements, easements, powers of attorney and ratifications, affidavits, final decrees, judgments or court orders, resolutions of governing bodies of municipalities, street vacations and right-of-way documents, and other types too numerous to mention. State laws govern many aspects of the Register of Deeds office, as well as the specific requirements for the many documents that are recorded. Because of the many specifics required to be met in documents, those instruments are considered authentic records once they are recorded in our office, and they may then be used in a court of law. South Dakota is known as a race and notice state, meaning that the order in which documents are recorded may help establish priority, and that in certain instances, notice requirements may be met through recording in the Register of Deeds office. Many of our records are public and are relied upon extensively by various businesses, such as financial institutions, land surveyors, engineers, attorneys, developers, and title abstracters. We work closely with the South Dakota Secretary of State's office in the filing of personal property financing statements, and we record a variety of lanes, from mortgages to county aid lanes, to state and federal tax lanes, which also require us to work with the South Dakota Department of Revenue, the U.S. Department of Justice, and the IRS. The South Dakota Department of Transportation and city engineers are also frequent users of our records in order for highway and development projects to be able to proceed. In addition to recording documents, the Register of Deeds serves the public in many other ways as well. We issue vital records that are needed to prove a person's birth, death, or marriage, and we are the only office authorized to issue a marriage license. In this regard, we work closely with the South Dakota Department of Health and Vital Records, as well as with funeral homes concerning death certificates and burial permits. The Register of Deeds office has maintained the same full-time staff level for over 20 years, while Minnehaha County has experienced a steady growth rate. And we now serve a county with a population of over 185,000 citizens. county with a population of over a hundred and eighty-five thousand citizens. We continue to see a significant number of people arriving from countries around the world. As public servants, meeting the needs of our citizens is a great priority. The Sioux Falls School District now teaches to students speaking ninety-one different languages. These are the same families that we also work with, as they obtain marriage licenses and other vital records, and become property owners and members of our communities. Language barriers and other cultural customs can be challenging. However, as county employees, we continue to work through those difficulties to try to help those who need our assistance. And now, I'd like you to meet a few of the people from our office, and also hear from a few of the business people that we work with on a daily basis.
Hi, I'm Cheryl, and I'm the Assistant Register of Deeds. I've been here for forty-one years, and I'm primarily responsible for overseeing the office in the absence of the Register of Deeds, and I am in charge of the accounting department. Whenever documents are recorded in our office, they must have a recording or filing fee, and if an ownership document is recorded, a transfer fee must be also paid. The Register of Deeds is one of the few offices in the county which takes in revenue. The primary fees we receive are recording fees, transfer fees, vital record fees, copy fees, and express fees for credit card transactions. Last year, our office received approximately two point six million dollars in revenues. I love my job and enjoy working with this great group of people.
All right. Hi, I'm Jim Cordell. I'm a land surveyor in the state of South Dakota, employed with Sayre Associates in town here. I provide plats and replats and easement exhibits and that type of stuff for lawyers, the general public, city of Sioux Falls, land developers. When I come to the courthouse, I'm usually charged with looking for recorded plats, any easements, you know, public records that would burden a subject property that I'm potentially working on. This is very accessible. Some of the documents I would look for are like a vacation of an alleyway or a road or, you know, a termination of an easement, public easement, or that type of thing. Recorded plats, any exhibit, easement exhibits, deeds, ownership documents. The Register of Deeds is very helpful. Everybody in this office is very friendly and more than willing to help us.
Well, I'm Sue, and I have been at the Register of Deeds office for a little over forty-two years. I've been doing this position for thirty-six years, and it is a titled red real estate specialist. And my specific job is checking the real estate when it comes in from title companies, banks, lawyers, over the counter, reviewing them, making sure that they are meeting formatting requirements, that they have all the information that's required and needed to be recorded, and to then get that recorded in a timely manner. Couple of examples today is I've got a mortgage here where the notary acknowledgement has bled through the legal description, needs to go back unfortunately. Got another one where the certificate of real estate value is missing some information. I've got the notaries are a little messed up, and questioning kind of the legal description. So it's a matter of reviewing those documents, making sure that they're recordable, and if they aren't, then delivering them back to whoever brought them, trying to get them adjusted and recorded as quickly as possible. I enjoy working with the title companies and the attorneys and the banks. I enjoy my job and the challenge that it brings to me each and every day. Sometimes that's good, sometimes that's bad, but I've enjoyed my job and the time that I have been here at the Register of Deeds office. I've seen a lot of the office evolve in many different ways, especially the real estate department, as we've always been moving forward and making things easier and quicker to find and to research, and it aids us working in the office, as well as the title companies, the surveyors, and the general public that may come in and utilize the information that we have here in the office.
Hi, I'm Robin. I am a senior records specialist here at the Register of Deeds office. I've been here for twenty-five years. Currently in my position, I work closely with the Internal Revenue Service. I record and release federal tax liens. I also work with the Secretary of State, recording UCCs and releasing them. The UCC stands for Uniform Commercial Code, which is a lien on personal property. I also work with the Department of Revenue and the South Dakota Unemployment Office, recording their liens and releasing them also. I guess every day here, there's something new. You never know what's going to happen. Every day is unique.
I'm Robin Brest. I'm a South Dakota abstracter for over twenty years. I work at Getty Abstract here in town. Abstracter searches property real estate records. We also search tax records at the treasurer, state tax liens, county aid liens, and judgments through the clerk of courts. We're searching property to determine the correct owner of the property, liens and encumbrances that belong with the property. And our customers are usually lenders, attorneys, real estate agents, and owners of properties. And they're looking for information that we put together, and it can be either searches or more commonly, it's title insurance written through our title company. And it's usually used for refinances, purchase transactions, can be foreclosures for attorneys, probate transactions, that type of thing is most commonly what it's used for. So of course, that is why it's very important that all of the records are correct. We're very lucky in Minnehaha County. We have an excellent Register of Deeds and staff. They're very meticulous about their records. Everything is very user-friendly, so anyone of the public that comes in with some assistance from the staff, they can actually complete their own searches because the records are kept so well.
I'm Susan, and I am the administrative records specialist for the office. I do a variety of duties in the office, but am specifically responsible for overseeing all vital records issues. As a result, I work closely with the South Dakota Department of Health. I'm also chiefly responsible for the processing of all vital check credit card orders when people request birth, death, or marriage certificates by phone, since our office is one which provides these services. We often work with people who may need to have a birth or marriage record amended, perhaps because they could not speak English well or at all, and the hospital may have written incorrect information on their child's birth record, or a couple may have had a marriage performed without a license, in which case, a court order would be required to allow us to issue a license. I also work closely with funeral directors as well regarding death certificates and any issues that may arise related to the death record. Our office also records military discharge records, which are not open to the public, and I work with the Veterans Service Officer to help assist veterans and family members in filing and obtaining their military discharges. On August sixth, it will be forty years that I have been employed by the Minnehaha County Register of Deeds office. I thoroughly enjoy my job and love what I do.
My name is Chad. I am a senior technicians, record technician here in the Register of Deeds. I do a lot of work in real estate and on the computer with our electronic recording. I formerly was a title abstracter in Iowa for about eight and a half years, so I'm fairly familiar with the recording processes. What I most enjoy about my job is probably the research that goes into the work here. I enjoy legal descriptions and looking those up and trying to find out where they came from, that sort of thing. What I do is index in our books in the afternoon, and I index on the computer in the mornings. So I kind of have the best of both worlds. I get to see how we do it and how we've progressed in our recording processes. So that's probably the most important thing going forward for our county, is efficiency, accuracy, and the ease of use of our new programs.
I'm Vicki, and I've been working at the Register of Deeds office for over seventeen years. I begin my day by entering deeds and sales-related documents into the computer. Now, these documents were entered into our index book on the previous day, and we do this in order to get this information up to the equalization office, as well as our own office. And we need to do this on a daily basis, because it's important to reflect the ownership on the various record IDs as soon as possible. All of the documents that we take in are scanned and imaged, and mortgage documents also, same thing. And someone else in our office enters those on a daily basis into a special computer program for those mortgage documents. We average a hundred to two hundred documents a day that we record. And another document that will alter the legal description that we enter into our computer system is plats. Now, plats can come out of section land like this one, and they can be quite complex, because as our county grows, we are having a process of trying to find the exact legal description. A plat like this will not have an owner on it or an address, so we strictly have to look at these up by legal descriptions, as well as a lot of our documents. Some of our legal descriptions can be quite complex. This document reflects legal descriptions that had to be taken back to whoever prepared them in order to do a correction on them, in order for us to actually prepare the document. And we constantly work together in our office throughout all phases of the recording process in order to make sure that we're recording documents accurately. We often double-check with each other throughout the office, throughout the day, to make sure these documents are correct. It takes a team to do what we're doing in our office. This is a great office to be a part of.
Hi, I'm Lori, and I am a records technician here at the Register of Deeds office. I came from a diverse background. I, it's funny, I actually was working at a title company years ago, and came down to the Register of Deeds. So I know a lot of the people that work here. Legal descriptions can be pretty complex, some of them, if you're in, especially in unplatted lands, and you've got footage, and you've got easements going here, easements going there, there's railroads, there's rivers, lakes, things like that too, that you kind of have to look at. And when you're searching, you have to take in consideration of all those things. I love serving the public. I don't know what it is, but I'm kind of a people person, and when I wait on people and help them, I feel good.
My name is Richard Moe. I'm an attorney here in Sioux Falls. I practice with the May Johnson Firm and have for many years. My practice is primarily in the area of real estate, trusts, estate, and business transactions. In those transactions, it's frequently necessary to confirm questions about real estate. And so I make use of the Office of the Register of Deeds on a fairly frequent basis. Many times, I request information by phone and receive the information electronically, but I also visit the office here on a somewhat regular basis. This office is the only authoritative source for information about legal titles, legal descriptions, and liens on real estate. And as real estate practice over the years has become substantially more complicated, those pieces of information have become more and more crucial. Through the years, I've had occasion to work in a number of, in the Register of Deeds office, in a number of counties, and it's my judgment that the Minnehaha County office is the model of efficiency, accuracy, and accessibility. Frankly, some other counties are difficult to work with, maybe almost secretive, just the opposite of what I find here. The staff is consistently helpful, ready and willing to assist both me and other members of the public that I've seen when I'm down here. It's a pleasure to work with them, and they make my practice a lot easier.
Thank you for joining us today, so that we could share a little of who we are and what we do. We're pleased to be able to play an important role in the endeavors in the development of this county, and to be of service to our citizens. We're the Register of Deeds office, here to serve you.
Well, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you so much for a little extra time, but it was, it was very, very wonderful for, for staff to be able to visit with you, so, thank you.
Julie, is the condition of employment in your office a lifetime commitment?
That is one of the questions we ask.
Yeah, isn't that wonderful? Yeah, a lot of, a lot of great dedicated public servants down there.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, so that takes us to item eighteen. Carol Muller, it's authorize the chairperson to sign amendments to the conflicts attorney's agreement for abuse and neglect cases.
Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is a request to authorize the chairperson to sign amendments for conflict attorneys for abuse and neglect cases. A year ago, we ventured into new territory, and we're pleased we had attorneys who took a leap of faith with us in terms of contracting with them for a flat rate in order to provide conflict defense when needed for abuse and neglect cases. Abuse and neglect cases often involved multiple children and then numerous parents, and so we typically need to have more than a couple of attorneys that are present on that. So we appreciate them being willing to do this. We've been monitoring this, we've been looking at how it's been going, and with this, we already did some fine-tuning on the IVC contracts. We're doing that now with the A and N cases. The changes to this is that the contracts would now be for fifty thousand dollars, and we are removing the juveniles and, and also the appeals from the language. So with that, we would ask for your permission to have these contracts signed by the chairwoman.
Any questions for Carol?
Quick comment. This contract has done a lot for saving the county money.
Correct.
Plus, kind of relieving the burden on our public defender and public advocate for all the work.
No, because this is conflicts. This is only when there's conflicts beyond the PDO and OPA, so it doesn't affect them at all.
Okay.
Correct.
My misunderstanding.
Yeah, and it is, you know what? I learned a lot when we went through and did the study on this a couple of years ago. But yes, it's when you need to have additional attorneys beyond those.
Okay. Would make a motion to approve the contract?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'd just like to publicly thank Carol as well. She, not only did we dive in, Carol dove in and worked very diligently in a, a new area for her, and, and I think have, you know, we expected that we'd make some tweaks over time, and, you know, that has come to fruition, but overall, it's been a very, it's been very successful. Not only do the folks involved in, for example, these A and E cases, A and N cases, get attorneys that are much more experienced in that area, and therefore, I think the courts have been very appreciative of it. It's also, as Commissioner Karski pointed out, been financially successful for the county, so it's been a win, I think, all the way around. All right, so that was approved. Item nineteen, legislative update.
Yes, Carol Muller, Commission Office, stepping in for Craig Dewey this, this morning. It is still morning yet, we haven't had that long of a meeting yet. So anyway, yes, just to let you know, veto day was held last Friday, which is when legislators come back to review vetoes that are out there. Really no impact on anything for the counties that we've had at this particular point. Was pleased that a few things have been, have been signed, such as two-on-one funding for statewide. There's been made some dollars available for that. We also, and as the sheriff talked about, how incredibly helpful, and very much of a key part of the fabric of what emergency services are in our community with being able to dial two-one-one. The other, the one that I would just mention is, you've had a lot of conversations talking about emergency radios, knowing that that is requiring a significant investment over years, and it is very cruel. and it is very crucial to have interoperability between all the different organizations that are part of that. So those dollars are starting to become a little bit available to or being set aside. Thank you.
Any questions? All right, Liaison Reports. Any liaison reports this week? Commissioner Benega?
I just want to indicate that I get a report, well, I get a report every week from JDC, and for whatever reason, the last couple of weeks, we've had dramatic increase in the number of youth who have been assigned to JDC. And in fact, some of them are going to be directly filed into adult court over the next few weeks because of the complexity and the severity, I guess, of what they've been charged with. So I'd like to commend the staff at JDC. They've hired some new individuals, but they've had lots of applications for full-time and part-time work, but they are working hard to keep up with the influx. And unfortunately, there's a lot of those that are coming in from out-of-county related issues.
Thank you. Any other?
Carol, I'd ask the state's attorney if she has an opinion as to why this influx might be happening. Has there been a change where there's a presumption of juveniles going to be upgraded to adult or downgraded to what's going on?
Well, Commissioner, I think that those conversations are best originated from the state's attorney, Mr. McGowan. So if the, if the chair and the board wants to hear from him, I think it would be best, and in everybody's interest, including the public, to hear from him directly on that, as well as our juvenile team, who would have more up-to-date information about those circumstances than I.
I would note that, I mean, we also follow the adult numbers in the jail on a weekly basis, and there's been somewhat of a spike recently. And the warden would explain that once the weather gets nicer and people get outside and interact with each other more, it unfortunately, it affects the criminal justice system. So, you know, these are all very complicated situations, and there's no one easy answer, but it is something that you notice that jail numbers spike as the weather gets nicer, and they spike every time there's a festival or a big gathering of people, so.
And Chair, I would just follow and say I don't need Erin to come and talk to us, but if we got a paragraph explaining what's going on, I'd appreciate it.
All right, anybody else with liaison reports? I think it's been alluded to a couple of times. There was a township meeting here tonight, and a few of us were able to attend. Those are always great meetings, I think. I'm always so impressed by the number of township representatives that show up, the quality of the information that's exchanged, and it's always a great opportunity to hear directly from those folks and the issues that are on their mind, the struggles that they're having. We have struggles with our roads and the flooding, and it has really affected the county townships as well, so. Okay, and new business? Any new business? I mean, none, any old business? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much.